Yeah, thanks.
So, so I'd call this meeting to order. I would request by Chair Guy has to lead us with the pleasure of allegiance.
Can we remain seated? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God.
With justice, liberty and justice for all. So I guess we have, next we have the road calls. Daniel, Sophia.
Yes. Chair Ratan Chaudhary.
Hi.
Vice Chair Guy Haas.
Present.
Albert Alcorn.
Aye.
Anbal.
Present.
Nasir Lalani. Commissioner Nasir Lalani. Absent. Kevin Lee.
Here, here.
Jason Wong.
Here.
Commissioner Abhijit Pandey. Abhijit Pandey. I thought I saw the Commissioner join earlier.
Yeah, I had seen him for a second.
Absent for now, we'll record it properly. And this evening, we have Mayor Rich Tran joining us. Thank you. And IT Director Mike Liu is not able to make it today. I'm IT Manager from IT Department, and we have Sophia from IT Department as well joining.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
So I'd like to announce, we have some few new members today. Mayor Tran appointed new Commissioners. Kevin Lee, who was previously an alternate member. He's a regular Commissioner now. Our previous member, Nasir Lalani, has been seated as a regular member. Jason Wong has been seated as a regular member. And Abhijit Pandey has been seated as an alternate member.
Welcome, new Commissioners.
Yeah, welcome, welcome to the SBI. So that moving along, sitting of alternates, we don't have any new items. We announced the new alternate. Abhijit Pandey. Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda.
I move, we approve the agenda.
I second it.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Chair.
Yes.
So the move, the Vice Chair Haas moved.
Aye.
Chair seconded, okay. And Ratan Chaudhary.
Aye.
Guy Haas.
Aye.
Albert Alcorn.
Aye.
Anbal.
Aye.
Kevin Lee.
Aye.
Jason Wong. We have six eyes, Chair.
Okay, so this is agenda, agenda is approved. Next item, if you could scoot up, next item is approval of the meeting minutes from the May seventeenth special meeting. I make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion was with the Chair and seconded by Vice Chair Guy Haas. Ratan Chaudhary.
Aye.
Guy Haas.
Aye.
Albert Alcorn.
Aye.
Anbal.
Aye.
Kevin Lee.
Aye.
Jason Wong. We have six eyes, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. So that's approved. Moving along, item number seven on the agenda is public forum. Do we have anybody from public present to present anything?
We have one attendee, yes, we do. We have Erish Kumar Metta.
Okay, so he's requested or invited to address, address the Commission, not on the agenda. There he must state his name and address for the record and limit his remarks to three minutes or less. For items not listed on the agenda, no response is required of the city staff or the Commissioner, Commissioners. However, Commissioners may ask staff to place the item on a future meeting, etc. So Mr. Metta, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much to, to the Chair, as well as all the Commissioner to the Science Innovation and Technology. As a public speaker, representative of a Science Innovation Technology Innovation Commission for the City of Murbitis, I wanted to represent not just the City of Murbitis, I wanted to represent the City of Murbitis, County of Santa Clara, as well as the District Seventeen, from Congressman Rockhannah's perspective. I wanted to mention about that, as a Science Innovation Technology Commission is a federal governed commission represented at the city level, it is very important that that the city must, as well, so does the city as well as the Science Innovation Technology must implement a plan of the master plan for the Science Innovation Technology, which would connect the Science Innovation Technology Commission to all the fourteen Commission of the City of Murbitis, as well as to ensure that how the Science Innovation and Technology Commission would be able to help the rest of the Commission to overcome the barriers, the dialects that is required to be implemented within the City of Murbitis as a part of a general master plan, as well as the metro, the Murbitis Metro Development Plan and the other two Arts Commission's master plan, as well as the city's implementation of a general master plan for the 2030. It has been brought to the attention that the recently City of Murbitis implemented the water evaluation plan for the City of Murbitis. It is important that how the City of Murbitis Science Innovation Technology Commission could help with the city's water, the water evaluation master plan such that, that where, such that the citizen of City of Murbitis be benefited from the help of the Science Innovation Technology Commission, either by a City of Murbitis application or by the web portal where they would be able to see and foresee that that how the water master plan has been evolving and the general funding, as well as the rest of the complaints and the feedback being provided through the Science Innovation Technology Commission. Recently, there was a federal bill of a Science Innovation Technology Commission from the government, the federal government, as well as state government, that has been introduced as a part of HR forty-nine. I request that the City of Murbitis implement that bill as a part of the federal policy bill that is to be implemented in conjunction with the Federal, Federal Trade Commission and as well as the Federal Communication Commission to implement within the Science Innovation and Technology. There has been quite a few bills from the twenty twenty-one, January twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-one that has been introduced by the Governor Gavin Newsom as well. I request that the Science Innovation Technology create a master plan that was provided in the year twenty twenty and implement that as per the Assembly Bill and the Senate Bill that were introduced. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Any other person in the public forum, Daniel?
There are no other public member.
Okay, thank you. So we move along to item number eight. There are a couple of presentations. I'll make the first presentation. And the second presentation by our, is going to be by our Vice Chair Guy Haas on Robert's Rules for Order. So I'll share my screen, I'll present presentation on the Japanese program. Give me one second here, let's see, share the screen. Can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
So I'll talk about Hayabusa II. Hayabusa II is the name of the spacecraft. It's a deep space spacecraft designed and operated by JAXA. JAXA is, stands for Japan Aerospace Exploration Agency. So JAXA is like NASA of Japan. And JAXA works very closely with NASA as well as ESA. ESA stands for European Space Agency. And the reason I'm talking about it is because the company I work for, NISAM, we, we supplied a lot of critical components for this craft. And this is spacecraft was specifically designed to study these steroids in our solar system. So Hayabusa means a pregnant Falcon in Japanese. And this Hayabusa II program is a, is a, you know, prior to this program, there was a Hayabusa program which brought some samples from another asteroid. And based on the success of Hayabusa I, JAXA designed Hayabusa II and, and launched that. And the first asteroid that planned to study was Ryugu, R-Y-U-G-U. Is orbiting near Mars, planet Mars. And Ryugu in Japanese is named after an undersea dragon palace. It's in a Japanese fair tale. So some, some descriptions of the aircraft, spacecraft, it weighs about six hundred kilograms. It was launched from Tanegashima in Ja, in Japan in December of two thousand fourteen. And it was launched by using a hydrogen-fueled H2a rocket. And we supplied some components for this rocket as well. So my company mainly supplies parts for satellites and rockets. Anyway, so Hayabusa II carried two rovers and one lander. It uses iron engine for propulsion in deep space. And this is a free-flow type of presentation. You can ask many questions. And if I remember, I'll try to answer them. And Hayabusa was launched in December in, but after traveling for several million, hundreds of millions of miles, it reached Ryugu in June of two thousand eighteen. And the distance was about one eighty million miles from Earth. But before, before setting the probes down, it did a lot of mapping of the, of the asteroid. And the interesting thing about this asteroid is that it's not very large. It's only about half a mile in diameter. It's a pretty small, pretty small asteroid. And you know, the theory is that this asteroid was created at the same time when the universe was created, at the time of the Big Bang. And initially, it was orbiting near Sun. So the entire surface of the asteroid is carbon, basically, is burnt. But underneath the surface, we have organic matter, you have elements, you have minerals which are supposed to be intact from the, you know, time zero, time when the Big Bang happened. So the interest here was basically to, to bring the surface material as well as material from underneath the surface. It's very interesting how they collected the subsurface samples, and I'll talk about that. And this was the first time subsurface material was come, collected from an asteroid by any spacecraft. And the spacecraft had to create a crater by shooting a projectile into the asteroid. And, and that, that was done, you know, successfully. And after spending about a year and a half on the orbit near Ryugu, Hayabusa II departed the asteroid in November of two thousand eighteen. So the mission again, as I mentioned, is to discover clues about the formation of the solar, solar system and how life originated in the, in our solar system. And the assumption, as I mentioned, is that asteroid subsurface rocks, they are unaffected by solar flares and they are believed to have retained the same state since the solar system was formed about four point six billion years ago. And scientists believe that water and organic materials are still present in the asteroid from the early periods of the solar system for about, from about four billion years ago. So once they study the materials here, they can shed some lights on how organic and water were initially, what organic materials and water were initially distributed throughout our solar system. Because there are many, many asteroids in the solar system. Ryugu is one of them. So basically, the theory, the, the assumption or the expectation is that since can reveal about theories how and how, how about how and possibly where other than Earth, life could have emerged. So this is the picture of the rocket taking off from Tanegashima, Tanegashima launch pad. This is the instrument, they show you the instruments in the Hayabusa II. So any spacecraft carries a lot of instruments. It has a lot of cameras, it has optical cameras, infrared cameras. It had a re-entry capsule, which I'll talk about a little bit later on. It had three rovers, you know, two Minerva rovers and one mascot, they call. Of course, we have to have LiDAR laser altimeters, we have sampling collection device, which is known as sample, sample horns. It had target markers. And the way to create a crater in the asteroid, JAXA used SCI, which is known as Small Carry-On Impactor or SCI. And that's what shot, that is what that device shot a projectile into the asteroid to create about a thirty-foot crater to reveal the subsurface material and then the spacecraft, you know, landed and picked up the samples. And then it has the various cameras, as I mentioned. And you have to have a lot of antennas, RF antennas. You have a lot of, you had three X-band antennas and one KA-band antenna. And it takes about eight minutes for the radio waves to travel back and forth between Hayabusa II and Earth. So that because of the distance being so large, on the left-hand side of the Hayabusa II, you can see the star trackers. Star trackers are practically there in every satellite and every spacecraft. And that's a very important component of the spacecraft or the satellite. Basically, it's programmed to give you the estimate of the satellite or the spacecraft with respect to other celestial bodies, planets and Earth at any given time, real time. So that is what people use to make sure where the spacecraft is located or they need to locate it to. So that's a very important, important component of the spacecraft or a satellite. And of course, you have the optical camera and the infrared camera and solar panels to basically charge the devices. It doesn't require too much electricity, but requires enough electricity for making, making the electronics work and also making the iron engine work. And I'll talk about, a little bit about iron engine a little bit later on. Also, the iron engine is the engine which is used in the deep space to propel their, propel the spacecraft. So this is, this slide talks a little bit about how they detonated the device. And I'll also show an animation on that at the end of the presentation. There's a very nice animation, which is about three to four minutes long, which has been done very well. But on the left-hand side of the aircraft, you see a box called mascot. It stands for Mobile Asteroid Surface Scout for Surface Observation. And JAXA actually had landed two rovers for surface exploration. But the way they put this mascot on the Ryugu surface, it dropped it from about, I, I thought about, I think about two hundred feet or so. So this box just falls onto the surface. And the gravity being so small of Ryugu asteroid, it probably did not have too much because of very little gravitational force, force was very little. But the mascot did survive the fall. And the animation will show that, and it will also show you how it works by transporting itself on the surface of the asteroid. And this was designed to work for about sixteen hours during the surface exploration. Okay, so this slide again is showing the same thing, the mascot landing package. Not all the rovers or the instruments on the spacecraft were deployed at the same time. Rover one was deployed on September twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. Rover two was released in October of two thousand nineteen. So the spacecraft was basically hovering over Ryugu for about year and a half. So a lot of things went on during that year and a half. And the mascot was dropped on the asteroid on third October, two thousand eighteen. And it also gives you the dimensions and the weights of different components here. I'll not go through that. And the camera was deployed on fifth of April, two thousand nineteen, the DCAM three. And most of the deployment, all these deployments were successful, except the Rover two. Rover two was a fail, failed before deployment. So they always have to have redundancy. They don't just put one rover. Because if one rover fails, you know, you don't get any data, surface exploration data and so on and so forth. The SCI, which I talked about, the Small Carry-On Impactor, that was used on fifth of April, two thousand nineteen. And it's very interesting how they chose a position on the satellite, they use target makers. These target makers are basically just balls which are coated with reflective coating. And they dropped it on the surface of Ryugu asteroid so that they could see it from the Hayabusa II, because Hayabusa II is pretty high up, is, it was not, it was, you know, fifty, sixty kilometers above the surface of the asteroid. And that's how they could find the target where they're supposed to land and so on and so forth. So I thought that was pretty innovative. So that's, you know, four, five target makers. And a sample returned capsule returned to Earth on December fifth, twenty twenty. So that was also very done, done very successfully. And that's also very interesting, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on in the slides. So Hayabusa, Hayabusa II picked up the first surface sample on twenty-first of February, two thousand nineteen. The SCI impactor shot the explosive on fifth April, two thousand nineteen. And they marked that target on June the fifth of the year, two thousand nineteen. And they picked up the sample from below the surface, which which was created from the explosive on July eleventh, two thousand nineteen. And second surface sampling was not needed, so it was not done. But it was optional, it was also planned. If the first surface sampling had failed, they would have tried the second sample, sampling of the surface. So this shows you the launch and the orbit. You can see the sun position of the sun. It was launched December, two thousand fourteen. And you see the red, red elliptical orbit of, of the Earth, that's Earth. The blue is basically the orbit of the Hayabusa II. So it circled the Earth for about a year and gained enough momentum to break free from the Earth's gravitational force in December, on December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. And that's your purple elliptical orbit. So purple ellipse is basically the orbit of the Hayabusa II spacecraft. And then it, it gained enough momentum to reach Ryugu in June of two thousand eighteen. And it stayed there until for about a year and a half. Did all the surface exploration, picked up the samples and then took off for Earth and came to Earth later, okay. So Hayabusa itself did not come to Earth. But it released the sample from about two hundred kilometers above Earth from nearly about the same distance as about, as we have up to the moon, to the moon. And the sample fell to the Earth in a canister in Australia. So these are some pictures of Ryugu asteroid, and there are surface mapping on the right. Hayabusa II mapped all the rocks which were over two meter in diameter, that, those are green dots. Middle bottom picture is a, as in, is a shadow of Hayabusa II on, on the surface of the asteroid when it was facing the Sun. And again, the left two pictures are, the left top is basically picture of the asteroid. It's about half, half a mile in diameter, looks like a top, basically. It's not very big. So it's amazing that they could land on this tiny asteroid and, you know, do all the work and come back.
Wow.
These are some surface pictures. On the left-hand side, the top left is a self, photographs of the surface before they created the crater. And the photograph below that, you can see the little bit of a dark spot on, which is the crater that was created from the SCI. And the pictures on the right are high-resolution photographs of the surface of asteroid, which is pretty rocky, you can see.
To land on a rocky surface, that's pretty hard.
Yes, yes, it's amazing what they did. So this slide shows you Hayabusa II coming back near the Earth and almost touching, in orbiting the Earth and releasing the capsule with the samples so that the, this capsule land, landed in, was designed to land or targeted to land or guided to land in Australia in the back Australian region of Umira. So it was released at about two hundred kilometers, as I mentioned. And it was used, it was basically, once it entered the surface atmosphere of the Earth, the parachute deployed and the heat shield was separated. And the sample, container, container, containing, container containing the sample fell onto the Earth. These are some actual pictures, you know, on the top left, you see that capsule entering the Earth's atmosphere. From the friction from the air, it gets, it got very hot. And on the right-hand side, it was a photo of that capsule entering the Earth's atmosphere, which was taken by Hayabusa II. So it's glowing, you know, with heat. And the bottom photo shows the sample of the asteroid's surface in the canister after the canister was opened by JAXA. Okay, so I think this is the second to last slide as of this morning. Hayabusa II is about hundred twenty-five million kilometers from Earth. It says, it is about eighteen miles per second. And the radio waves takes about fourteen minutes to go back and forth. And the Sun to Hayabusa II distance is about one astronomical unit. One astronomical unit is, is the distance between the Sun and the Earth. And it's, so all the, all the systems of the set spacecraft, which was, which were not used in Ryugu or which were not left in Ryugu are still operational. And now the spacecraft is headed to another asteroid, which is named two thousand one CC twenty-one. And it will get there sometime two thousand twenty-six. After that, it will head to asteroid nineteen ninety-eight KY twenty-six, which is only about thirty meters in diameter, which is about hundred feet in diameter. But this nineteen ninety-eight KY twenty-six is spinning very rapidly as compared to Ryugu. Ryugu is spinning only once every eight hours. So one equal day at Ryugu, in Ryugu is only eight hours long. Nineteen ninety-eight KY twenty-six is much closer to Sun. And it's about ten billion kilometers from Earth. And the spacecraft and iron engines are working fine, observation equipments are also working fine. And the journey to nineteen ninety-eight KY twenty-six is expected to be a major technological challenge as it's so close to the Sun. And it will be the first time that a spacecraft will have visited an asteroid which is less than hundred meters in diameter. Okay, then I'll probably show you guys a quick animation of the whole project. And let me do that.
So Ratan, while you're getting that running, also, so Rugu is, is in the asteroid belt?
Sorry, say it again.
I'm sorry. So, so the asteroid Rugu, is it in the asteroid belt or is it outside?
Somewhere, 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 somewhere there, but a little bit away from that. And that's a good question. In order to get there, Hayabusa II did not, could not go straight. It has to do a very zigzag pattern to reach that asteroid to save itself. You can see the Venus and Mars and earth.
We're not seeing the animation.
Two is reaching the Ryugu asteroid.
We just see the post Ryugu mission slide. We don't see the animation.
Oh, you can you can see the presentation, right?
Yeah, but only the slide, the slides, not any animation.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, one second. Uh, let me try that again, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, I was sharing my screen. Uh, new share, new share, okay.
There it is.
See it now?
Yep.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Let me restart that. And you can see from a very beginning.
I see this. So the asteroid is between earth and Mars. Is not beyond Mars.
No, 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 it's correct.
But did the um, the or or did it actually go into orbit on the around the asteroid or did it was it under power the whole time?
Uh, it was under power. It was a kind of straddling the asteroid, but it not orbit the asteroid.
Okay.
Because the asteroid has very little gravitational force.
So how many orbits orbits did it take to get the full map?
I think it orbited earth for a year before it broke free.
Wow.
But I don't know how many times it orbited Ryugu before it straddled it. This is a mascot is being ejected from the craft.
And mascot's got two um, two two rovers?
No, the rovers are separate. Mascot is the other, is the third one.
Okay.
It falls pretty hard. I mean fairly hard on the surface. But the mechanism they use to transport it on the surface is pretty amazing. And it will you will see that.
Does it automatically write itself?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was built by, you know, in conjunction with German and French engineers. This was the only component which was not built by Jacksa alone. So this was designed to work for only sixteen hours.
Any commands to control it take eight minutes to reach it?
Uh, sorry, I didn't get your visit. What is the question? So here you can see this is there's a, there's a cantilever system which is rotated. To turn over the mascot. And make it to hop or go from one place to another place.
How does it actually launch?
So I let's save the question till the end. I'll try to answer them at the end.
I got a room.
The music in the background, I can't hear very clearly. So this is how it communicated to Hayabusa two with an antenna.
Oh, that's what they did.
We don't need no stinking wheels.
Mm hmm. They didn't put wheels because they were they were, they were not sure how big the rocks were.
Sure.
This is the impactor with explosive. So the the Hayabusa two goes in the, in the shadows. When they're using the explosives so that the Hayabusa two doesn't get damaged and they bring it back. On top of the crater. So the entire maneuvering was very delicate and very intricate. So that, that was the presentation. With the animation. Uh, Abizit, you had a question, I think.
Yes, so on the navigation or maneuvering, I was asking how much it is automated by Hayabusa two itself and how much since there's. I believe there's an eight minute gap between when can you send some information and when the rover receives it?
Yeah, so I think a lot of navigation was done from Jacksa Space Station. Uh, that's why it took a long time. They didn't do it all all at once. They took their own sweet time. And they did did all this collection and all that or. All this mapping and all that in about a year and a half. Uh, some of the stuff was basically automated. Like, uh, you know, reaching Ryugu, uh, you know, using a zigzag pattern. That's what I understand. I don't have too much detail on that. But the entire thing went smoothly and as planned and it was amazing what they did.
So the landing itself, they don't need to do it in real time, like because since there is so much lag between when the commands get received.
Right, right. So hopefully you guys enjoyed it.
Yeah, very much so.
Yes, good. Thank you.
Here we have a one public or comment.
Okay. Uh, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Ted. Thank you very much, uh, to Science Innovation Technology Chair and the entire commission. Uh, I wanted to, uh, I wanted to mention about the especially about the topic. And the content that has been chosen for today's presentation. Uh, it's very important to understand uh, that how. How the concept and the fundamentals of the Hayabusa two introduced by Japan. Aligns with the uh, with the national aeronautics and space features, space research application.
So I think, I think, I think I recommend you talk to Jacksa and ask them. Because I don't talk directly to them, uh. I do.
It's not a question that I'm I'm trying to address. Please allow the, please allow the the commenters to provide the input as. To the commission as you know, it is important that you know how this program helps the city. That is very important. The question over here is that. This is the fundamentals on the electronic propulsion. And as well as the plasma research where the research is being conducted by. The spacecraft in order to identify the space objects. And such programs are also being available in the United States of America. And the historic moment was came on October twentieth. When the Osiris aircraft, which was the origins, space interpretation, resource identification, security and. And Regulate Explorer was made. And this was a historic moment that was great by the NASA. For launching the spacecraft in the space for the pro- with the program instruction robotic arm. Briefly touched down to collect a sixty gram sample from the surface for the delivery to the earth in twenty twenty three. It is to note here that in a such kind of a presentation and. And as well as the spacecraft detailing such helps the city of Milpitas, not just city of Milpitas, but the space application program. Innovation to establish within the city of Milpitas as a part of industry, academic and international partners in align with the NASA. Also to note down here that. That such program would help the city to directly connect the city of Milpitas to the NASA program in the mountain view. This is, this could be the, this could, the presentation could pave a path. For the city of Milpitas generation to come and provide the inputs directly to the Science Innovation Technology and Commission. It is not a question to be given, provided comment on the presentation rather than it is a more fruitful conversation to place. About the topic of a space and the NASA's Osiris Rex Mission Team. To confirm that you know how the spacecraft technology evolves. To carry around the storage procedure for the plasma research and as well as the fuel efficient. Fundamentals to be implemented for the spacecraft.
Okay, thank you.
The Japanese space.
So I guess with that, we move on to the next item agenda. A little time check is seven forty four. Uh. Item number nine, uh, business items.
Here we have a presentation by.
Sorry, yes, I'm I'm sorry, yes.
A much briefer and less elaborate presentation, I must say. That was pretty remarkable.
Yeah, the nation is from vice chair has. I Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay, I just wanted to point out, I've been on the commission for, I don't know, a year and a half or so. I came on as an alternate and eventually got in as a voting member. Uh, and I was surprised when uh, I noticed then earlier this year. When a person who made a motion and the person who seconded it were automatically counted as eyes in the the roll call. And I challenged that and uh. We're we're not doing that anymore. We're we're recognizing the motion and the second and then doing the complete roll call. And also here in the uh. In the comments, under Robert's rules, a motion to approve the minutes of a prior meeting doesn't even require a motion. Uh, the presiding officer can just ask for a vote to approve the minutes as presented or if there need to be any correction. So that's one way to move things along a little faster. And the other thing is. Um. That's going to be a duplicate just a second. Uh, Robert's rules go back to the early Continental Congress and over the years. They've gotten really complex and very detailed and we're not doing anything nearly as elaborate. Uh, as Congress is. So it's a whole lot simpler. And I figured I would just put up this link to a, believe it or not. Robert's Rules for Dummies, cheat sheet. And it uh, it goes through some some simple cases. It even suggests that the. Somebody who wants to make a motion should rise and wait till the chair recognizes them by name and then make their motion and so forth. That's. A little more elaborate than we need. Just a. The chair, see, in general. The way this commission is operated is the chair or perhaps uh, the staffer. Recommend something for a motion and we consider it to be moved. And we may have already done some discussion on it. Technically, the motion should be before any discussion and then the discussion goes along. And then it may very well be that after somebody has moved and somebody else has seconded and there's discussion. The mover or the second or both decide they're going to vote against it. They're not required to be assumed to to be in favor of it. So that's that's the other reason for saying, well, we we shouldn't automatically count the mover and the second. And lastly, uh, on an editorial angle. Motion is a noun. Move is a verb. You don't motion so and so. You move so and so and what you have moved is the motion. Uh, emotion is you wave a hand or something. Uh, as a verb. So. Let's keep in mind that I move this, I move that, I second this, I second that. That's all I had to offer.
A question?
Uh, Vice Chair has.
Yeah.
Any any questions there?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Okay.
Um, I had heard in when I was um, in high school and we did the mock trial type things. I had heard that the motion to adjourn is a privileged motion. Um, may not, let's see, does not need to um. It can be called anytime in the order and can does not need to have a vote. Is that is that correct or not?
I'm not sure about a vote. I know it doesn't need a second. I'd have to consult my handbook. Maybe the mayor has an answer on that one, but but a motion to adjourn. His his question.
I'll do some research on my own as well.
Oh, good.
So Vice Chair has, I think when we, for the agenda, when we. Uh. To approve. Uh, that is not necessary. You are saying you just take the votes.
Yeah, the yeah, the the presiding officer and usually the chairman of the meeting. Brings up the subject of the minutes and says, uh, we we have the minutes of the previous meeting. Uh, are there any corrections? We don't need a motion. We don't need a second. Are there any corrections? If there aren't any corrections, then they stand approved as submitted.
I see. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Here we have a public comment.
Okay. So you have three minutes, I guess.
Hmm.
Please state the name and start.
Please unmute.
Again, again, I wanted to thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Uh, for the opportunity, opportunity to provide the commands. As the vice chair and chair is a so is a person to the commission's body structure. It is very important to know the rules and the dimensions of that, you know, how the picking up the motion. Taking the motion and approving it as a second. Allows the commission to provide the inputs and as well as approve the votes on the motion to consider. The Roberts Brown, the Robert and Brown law is not just limited to having the motion to take or having the. Uh, motion to approve, second it and then you know, taking a vote into the consideration for the proceedings to approach within the meeting. There is, there is also a requirement of a deliberation to include as well. And as well as of expert communication. The expert communication allows each and every member of the commission to be directly contacted. By as a government official by the city of Milpita citizens and as well as the individuals connecting as. A partnering agency to the city of Milpita Science Innovation Technology Commission. As a part of a communication proceedings to provide the commission inputs on. The the requirement to implement as a representative. As as a representative of a district, county and as well as the city, what I. What I, what I request is that, that the city of Milpitas. Chair, Vice Chair and all the commissioner considered to implement the expert communication. Where they will be directly be contacted as Science Innovation Technology Commission, Science Innovation Technology Commission. And providing the inputs as a part of directly one-to-one way communication to be established as part of a Robert M. Brown's Act. Allows the inputs and the commands to be accepted directly to the commissioner, chair and vice chair. That will, that will also open up a, that will also open up an export, not just an export of communication, but having the science innovation technology to implement the deliberation procedure. Along with the world planning commission has developed as a part of a procedure. Every deliberation that is, that has been undertaken by the planning commission before the proceedings of the commission's meeting. Being communicated via mail, via paper to the, to the city of Milpitas. Same way, the science innovation technology implementing the expert communication for all the commissioners. Would allow the city of Milpita citizens to directly communicate and raise their concerns, voice, feedback to the commission as a part of expert communication, as well Robert M. Brown's Act. To the city of Milpitas and as well as to the commission. To note here that the expert allows also the similar rights to exercise for the commissioners to the citizens as well.
Yeah, thank you, next. Do we have any more?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. So moving along. Daniel, you were saying something?
Yes, if I can add something here about the item. Yeah, the Roberts rules is, is really how we conduct business. Not just here in Milpitas, but I think any other city in the state at least. And oftentimes, when I watch commission meetings, I'm a part of the veterans commission and the arts commission. It's so important for each person and I think this commission's excellent. With the Roberts rules and the procedures and the votes and, and understanding the motions and the seconds and. But there's so many more things, I think. And I just want to share this for the betterment of each commissioner, I know we have a couple of newer ones. Which is great, but certainly to understand all the motions available, you could, even in a commission meeting. It's the same format as city council. You can make a motion to postpone an item. You can make a motion to limit discussion. Sometimes these commission meetings may go at length. And you know, as this commission, there's a, really um, rules where you can make a motion to limit discussion per person. You know, to one minute each person or two minutes each person. I remember this is a meeting, just like any business. Yeah, I know, right, Commissioner Haas, it's a meeting and just like any other organization out there, heck, you know, it's really, they can go on and on and I think the efficiency of meetings is certainly key. And the Roberts rules really is a proven way to run a good meeting. And that's what it is. And so I encourage folks to just do a simple internet search on a search bar or tab and, and there's a lot of cheat sheets out there. With things that you may not even have known with the Roberts rules. It's just so many more tools for your toolbox, so I just wanted to share that. And I think this commission's doing great. This is a really awesome and efficient commission here, so. Thank you, kudos to the chair and the vice chair, certainly. Because they're the ones presiding over the meeting. And ensuring that it's being guided in the best way, so. Just really interesting Roberts rules, so I'm, I'm happy to see that item here tonight, thank you Commissioner Haas.
Thank you Mayor Tran. Okay, next item on the agenda is business items, we have a little time check, we have four minutes left till later. We'll cover work plan updates. Starting with goal number one.
Uh, sorry to interrupt, Chair. So on item eight, we used to take motion and second and vote, we're not doing that anymore.
Uh, actually we should do that, sorry, I, I. In that, yes, so we'll make a motion, motion to receive and file. Item number eight.
I move to. I move to receive and file.
Motion by, motion of vow and second by Vice Chair Haas. Ratan Chaudry.
Hi.
Kai Haas.
Hi.
Alvar Alcorn.
Hi.
An Bao.
Hi.
Ken Lane.
Hi.
Jason Wong.
Hi.
We have six eyes, Chair.
Okay, thank you, thank you Sophia. We'll go to item number nine, business item, goal number one for work plan updates. Do we have any update on the digital inclusion strategy? Kevin Lee.
Uh, so I am finalizing.
Sound is not very clear. I see it being muted. Kevin, we can hear you but not very clearly, are you using your phone?
I think he said he's traveling, right?
Yeah, I was traveling, he said.
I thought.
Can you, can you guys hear me now?
Now, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that, yeah, there's like bad signal around where I'm at. Yeah, so I've been working on finalizing my survey. It's basically a list of questions that we're going to be sending out to partners like the MUST school district and like the Seaver Center. And some other community organizations and the survey questions. Until asking for information from my residents to learn more about their situation with internet access and what backgrounds and demographics they belong to. So I'm finalizing the survey right now. I'll be finishing that up and requesting to get a final approval from Daniel, Mike and the public information officer. Once you give the final approval, I'll be sending a digital version of that survey out in the form of Google forms. And I will be working with the city staff to see how we can have a, how we can print physical versions of that survey out so we can distribute it at some of the community centers around, around the city. And after that, I'll just be looking forward to, you know, getting as many survey respond, respondents as I can. And based off of that information, I will be able to create a presentation to present to this commission and city council about the state of our residents' needs. Or potential needs in regards to internet access or free internet access in the city of Milpitas. But yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm finalizing our survey right now.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Lee.
Chair, if I may suggest. But Razani Neer, the previous commissioner is no longer with the commission, she moved out of the city. So we have new commissioners, if I may, I would recommend asking for some volunteers.
Yes. Yeah, so I think new commissioners who have joined us, Commissioner Lalani is not here. But Commissioner Jason Wong. Or Mr. Pandey. You, you guys can, you know, you're free or welcome to sign up for any one of these. And help out the other commissioners who have signed up for, you know, these goals. And be cool owners and drive and help them, you know, achieve these, these goals. So feel free to speak up. Jason Wong and Abhijit. If any one of these interests you, please let us know and we'll capture that and we'll add you to the list.
So for new.
I can help with.
Sorry, commission, go ahead.
Yeah, I can work on the 5G implementation status and I can, looks like A, Bow and G has, so. I'll work with you guys.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Abhijit.
New commissioners, staff will send out some more details of these, each of these goals, so you have an idea what it actually entails.
Thank you. And Jason, feel free to add your, you know, yourself also, insert yourself in as well.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to take a look at traffic congestion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We didn't get to introduce ourselves, like in.
Yeah, so I think, I think let's do that at the end, that would be good. Let's go through the work plan and we should have done that earlier, but I think. Next one is 5G implementation status from Commissioner Baugh and Vice Chair Haas, do we have any update on that?
There's no update this time around.
Nope. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Goal number three is order sensor that's owned and co-owned by myself and Commissioner Alcorn, I don't have any input on that one. This time around.
Neither do I.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, next one is a traffic congestion. Again, I'm owner and co-owner on that one as well, I don't have any inputs on that. I'd sent out some emails earlier, I haven't received any replies, so I have to follow up on that. Goal number five is IT project update, IT technology project update. From Commissioner Baugh and Commissioner Alcorn, do we have any update on that?
There, there's no updates.
Uh, no updates, but I was, I would like to request that the city provide us a tour of the nine eleven dispatch center again.
Good idea.
We'll get that scheduled, Commissioner.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Daniel.
And we recently had a major upgrade in the center as well, so.
Yeah, it would be good for the commission to know that, that'll be good.
We'll inform you with the potential schedules. We couldn't do that because of the pandemic, but now it's all open, so we'll definitely get that scheduled.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to receive and file the work plan updates. And I have a second. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion from Chair Chaudry. And we have second from Vice Chair Kai Haas. Ratan Chaudry.
Hi.
Kai Haas.
Hi.
Alvar Alcorn.
Hi.
An Bao.
Hi.
Kevin Lee.
Hi.
Jason Wong.
Hi.
We have six eyes, Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Chair, we have a public speaker.
I guess we'll have to pass that in the interest of time, Daniel. I also want the new commissioners to introduce themselves. Because we, we are done with the public forum.
Okay.
So we'll go to item number ten, discussion of future items, do we have any future items? That we want to add to the agenda?
I think for July, I am doing a presentation on the autonomous data, data center.
Commissioner, July is a quiet month, so I was going to announce that the, we will not have July meeting. So that will start in August.
Okay, thank you.
So you can do that in August, Commissioner Baugh.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, other, also please feel free to add your name if you want to present. All technical stuff, that's fine, to eliminate STIC, commission, STIC and or the city itself.
Yeah, and that will be under item eight A, right?
Correct, correct.
Listen to this, yeah.
Correct, thank you Sophia.
Now, I noticed that the, the, the company pony.ai was, was given permission by the DMV to start their self-driving test, self-driving car test in Milpitas. Do we have any feeling about that, do we need to set up any, any guidelines or? How do you feel about that? Do we need to discuss it at a future event?
I think, I think that's a good idea, Commissioner Baugh. I think we should, we should add it to the, as a discussion item for future items, of future items in the next session.
I agree, we should have discussed about it or maybe have a meeting with the company that is performing those testings in our jurisdiction.
Yes. So Sophia, if you can please add that to the discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, do we need a motion to receive and file, item number ten?
Couldn't hurt.
No.
Okay. So next one is number eleven, liaison reports of Mayor Tran. Please feel free to enlighten us.
Hey, thank you for the opportunity here, I just want to wish everybody a great summer here in city government. As mentioned just moments ago, July is our recess. There are no city council meetings, there are no city commission meetings. The city's still running, folks, full-time employees are still working. But we do take July off, which is pleasant. And as we get out of this pandemic. There's going to be a lot of opportunity, I think here in Milpitas. We have received federal stimulus dollars through the American Rescue Plan. And I want to ask this commission, if there's any ideas that you think could contribute to the betterment of Milpitas. I'll be happy to take any suggestions, recommendations you may have. I think the city council right now is sitting on about 1.2 million dollars. After we already allocated other, higher amount to other sort of expenses, so. I'm sitting here trying to figure out how we're going to spend this extra 1.2 million dollars through the American Rescue Plan, so I, I'm here with you tonight and so I could ask you if you think you have any good ideas. The city could spend money on our economic recovery, maybe through technology. Just go ahead and shoot me an email. Or in that, I definitely want to welcome our new commissioners here and I know the chair will lead sort of that introduction and welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mayor Tran, that's a good problem to have, we'll, I encourage you to get back Mayor Tran's with their suggestions. It's a good one, thank you. And.
I have a question.
Sure.
Hi Mayor Tran.
Hey, how you doing?
For, for the 1.2 million dollars, is that money that we, the city necessarily has to spend or could that also be saved for, as like a rainy day?
That's a good question, yeah, the answer is we have to spend it or else we got to send it back to Washington and.
Use it or lose it.
That's it, that's it, I like that.
Yeah, it's a good problem to have.
Do we have like a future agenda item to, so we have more time to think about what types of projects we could have to improve the city and maybe discuss this at the next meeting?
Yeah, it's, there's a timeline, the council's gonna meet about this American Rescue Plan dollars in August and so I'm just asking each commissioner individually. If you have any ideas to just email me. This is not really a request for the commission itself as a body. Due to the time constraints and I, I was at the art commission meeting yesterday and I did not have a share this information with them actually. But I know the experts in this commission can provide a different type of thinking and so, yeah, I just wanted to check in with each person individually and if you think you have any good ideas for Milpitas. Let's connect and maybe we can make a difference together.
Okay, thank you for that, this is a really big, really big deal.
Yes, thank you Mayor Tran. Okay, then I guess for before we adjourn, I guess I want the new mayor, new commissioners to introduce themselves. Please tell us, you know, where you work, what do you do? How long you have been living in Milpitas? And your hobbies a little bit? So Abhijit, you can start.
Yeah, so like I received, so this is, this is my first commission meeting and. I was kind of surprised, like I had applied for it last year and. So it looked like it went through and I got an invite directly to come in and be, be a panelist here. So about my background, I've been here in Milpitas 13 years. And somewhere on North Milpitas Boulevard in Jacqueline, that's where I. I have my home. And in technology space, like I've been in technology space for past 20 years and. So cybersecurity is one of my fields and currently I work for Sleep Number Labs. So we are looking at different sleep data collected from mattresses and beds. And, and we are adding a lot of functionality like temperature, pressure, and we're looking at snore data and things like that. So, so a lot of sensors we, we are putting into our mattresses and, and I see like there, there are odor sensors and. That Milpitas probably can, can use some of my knowledge in how, how we interact with these sensors and. What do we do with all this data that we collect? 5G implementation status, so I was working at Netgear before for five, five years and Netgear. They have like five routers which are going to sit in homes which have both wifi as well as cellular. So cellular you can buy from AT&amp;T or something if, if your wifi is going down, so. That gives another kind of a device at home and, and mobile hotspots. So maybe the city during, during this pandemic, we saw like a lot of kids. Now need greater wifi for. To access school material and, and, and there. I see more need of these kind of, kind of ad hoc 5G devices where, where kids can come in and. Just get internet access. So maybe city can sponsor that and. People who don't have good wifi, even I, I saw it in this meeting as well, so they can, they can come and use that in libraries and things like that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Abhijit, Commissioner Jason.
Yeah, hi. So I was born and raised in Milpitas. I've lived here my entire life. I recently graduated from Cornell University, did my bachelor's and master's. And I'm going to work for Roblox in like a certain two weeks. And yeah, that's, that's me.
Good, thank you. Welcome to, welcome to the committee. Okay, I guess with that, I guess we move along to. Number 12, which is adjournment.
I may, sorry if I may interrupt, the city staff has some updates for you.
Okay, okay. Daniel, go ahead, please.
Sure, so a couple of things that we have noted today. Staff will send you a copy of the City of Milpitas Commissioner Handbook to the new commissioners. And there's also a parliamentary procedure guide that we have. Unfortunately, I can't send electronically because it's a copyrighted material, so. We'll be going back into the office in, in August timeframe. So we will have a physical copy available for you, and if you need it sooner than that, please let me know. And we'll send additional details for the work plans, so you can volunteer for some of the items. And we will schedule 911 Dispatch Center tour, we'll check with Dispatch. What availabilities they may have. And as the, the previous commissioners, you would know that Mike Liu is IT Director currently. And he has recently announced that he will be departing the city after, I believe, 25 years of service. He wasn't able to make it today, but he will be attending our August meeting. Because July, we are in recess, so. I wish you have a good break during July and please let me know if we can assist you with anything.
Hi, Mayor Abhijit.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, I was wondering if Daniel could connect me with Commissioner Abhijit. And I can, myself, so the 5G hotspot devices here is suggesting.
Sure, definitely.
That sort of ties in with my project.
Definitely, Commissioner Lee, I will get you and, I'm sure Pandy connected. I'm sorry, I forgot one item for the new commissioners for the website. Please submit your photo that you would like to post on the website and we'll get that posted for you.
There's a form they got to fill out too at some point.
Yes. Financial disclosure or something, right? Yes.
And then.
Yes. Okay, anything else from city staff, Daniel?
That's it for today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we move along to item number 12. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. It's 8:17. Thank you all. Have a nice July, 4th of July.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy August recess.
Yes.
Thank you. See you next time.
See you next time. Take care. Thanks. Bye.
Bye.